Good evening, welcome to the February 6, 2013 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the December 19, 2012 and the January 9, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have one item on the consent agenda this evening, that is a mandatory referral for a 50-foot utility and easement, access easement from the Walter Hale Court to the Southwest Area Tank. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department is the applicant. Is anybody on the Planning Commission, anybody on the staff, or anybody in tonight's audience that'd like this item removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Chairman, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have three public hearings to conduct this evening, the first of which is an annexation request for approximately 6.28 acres along Memorial Boulevard, north of West Thompson Lane. Anthony Toegrey is the applicant. Ms. Ely, are you doing the public hearings?
I am, yes, thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider the adoption of a plan of services for some properties located along the western side of Memorial Boulevard, Highway 231. The properties are shown in the orange, purple, and blue color on the map that you have before you. You can see the light yellow color is current city limits, so the subject properties, which consist of three parcels, are surrounded by Murfreesboro city limits on the north, west, and south sides. Across Memorial Boulevard to the east is the VA Hospital, which is in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, so it is not within Murfreesboro city limits. The properties that are being studied for annexation are identified as the original request area and additional area number two. The original request area was, Anthony Toegrey is the applicant for those and has requested that you annex them so that they can be, receive city services. You did include the additional study, or the additional area number two, the purple area, as an additional area to consider to study this property and see if you think that it would be right to annex this property. It would be, it would be, all three properties are able to receive city services, and as a matter of fact, these three parcels are already receiving Murfreesboro Electric Department electric service and streetlights. They do have sewer available to them, and city will be able to provide our fire service, schools, and other services that we have available. As outlined in our plan of services, the request does include some right-of-way of State Route 231, Memorial Boulevard, and that would be, make any, it would, there would no longer be a gap in the highway of an unincorporated area, and the entire right-of-way would be located with Murfreesboro city limits. So you have been given the plan of services and feasibility study, and had an opportunity to look at that. If you have any questions about it, staff would be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. But if you, you should conduct a public hearing before considering any adoption of the plan of services. I would like to point out that these properties are located in Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary and are contiguous with city limits on all sides, and you could, you can choose to annex either the entire area or a portion thereof, but before you make any decision, you should conduct a public hearing.
Okay. Ms. Ray Lott, do you have anything to add?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay. Does applicant have a prepared comment?
I haven't been able to wait.
I think Mr. Harney is here representing the applicant, and the applicant is present himself. If you have questions, then.
Mr. Harney, in case you want to say anything before we open the public hearing, we'll give you the opportunity.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Toegrey, who is making this request, and he's here also tonight. The reason for this request is he's owned this property for quite some time with the intention of sooner or later wanting to develop the property and wanting to develop it commercially. As Memorial Carter is starting to get some new activity on it and see some new retail interest, we felt it was appropriate time to bring the request forward to have this property annexed. As you've seen on the aerial, it is adjacent to the Publix Shopping Center there, which we were also involved in several years ago, putting that together and doing both out parcels there in the original Publix Center. And we feel this is an appropriate request, being contiguous to the existing city limits. All utilities are there and available, and we do have some interest in the property, but like in so many cases in town, until you have something zoned, it's really hard to push forward to try to get a user strongly interested in the property. But we're here to answer any questions that you might have, and respectfully, we would like to make this request to be annexed and zoned commercial highway.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? So, Mr. Harney. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over our rules that we conduct our public hearing by, in case you've not been here before. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. If you would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address if you would. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and make all your comments toward the Planning Commission. If you have any questions, our staff will make note of your questions, and we'll attempt to answer your questions at the end of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Members of the Commission, my name is David Demastas. I live at 485 Mountain Circle Road, McDonald, Tennessee. I'm here to represent my mother, Jerry Demastas, that lives at 3447 Lebanon Pike, which is the northernmost portion of this study. After the last meeting, the children and mother got together, we discussed the services that were going to be provided that she doesn't already have, and determined at that point in time that she would have no need of these services right now. And we would like to be left out of the annexation and also the rezoning, because we feel like it'll just be a tax burden on her that she doesn't really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mastas. Last call. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Ray Lott.
We included this property as an additional study area so that we would have done our homework as we prepare our recommendation to council. You may either recommend approval of the entire area as identified, or you may recommend approval of some of it, you may recommend approval of none of it. So you have the flexibility here. What we will be doing tonight, of course, is preparing a recommendation to the city council, and that is your job.
Joseph Pfeiffer, which he spoke as the purple, correct?
That is correct, and that includes her parcel and the right-of-way in front of her parcel. And if we leave all that out, she will not be surrounded by the city, because the VA Hospital is not inside the city.
That being the case, I would move that we recommend approval of the annexation, leaving out the Demastas property, or what's shaded in purple along with the right-of-way on our map.
Second.
Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous, or carries. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Moving on, moving on to the next item on the public hearings. We have a zoning request for the same property, 6.28 acres along Memorial Boulevard, north of West Thompson Lane, to be zoned commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. Anthony Toegrey is the applicant.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider changing the zone of the properties which were just considered for annexation from their R15 zone in the county to CH Commercial Highway District. I believe since you have decided to not annex the additional area, which is the area shaded purple, this public hearing would no longer include that parcel since it's not in city limits. I don't think you have any authority to change the zoning on the property, or if it is not in the city.
How many acres are we talking about now?
It was 6.28 to begin with, and if you give me a minute to look through the plan of services, I can probably figure.
I just want to make sure we enter that in the record.
Thank you, 3.2 acres.
3.2.
Yes, Dr. Toegrey.
Are the two parcels that are shaded orange, including, I think, the right-of-way that was annexed adjacent to the Toegrey property. These properties are located north of the Publix Shopping Center, which is zone CH. There are also some out parcels which currently aren't developed, but those are also zone CH, so, and it's also located south of some CH zone property, which I think are currently undeveloped. So the request is on this property, CH, would be contiguous with the other properties that are fronting along Memorial Boulevard or Lebanon Pike or Highway. The property does back up to properties zoned RM16, which is multifamily residential district, and that's the location of the Paddock Club Apartments. It is directly across from the VA Hospital, which is zoned for institutional purposes in the county. The applicant has requested, in addition to being annexed, to being zoned CH simultaneous with the annexation, which can happen at the same time, if that's your decision. I believe Mr. Harney is also representing the applicant regarding the zoning change request. So this zoning change request, you should conduct a public hearing prior to making any recommendation to city council. And Mr. Harney, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time? I don't think he has anything he'd like to add, but if you have questions or concerns, I want to talk to him. He's definitely available and does represent the property owner. If you have any questions about the application, both myself and Mr. Lott would be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should go ahead and conduct your public hearing.
Okay. Any questions at this time?
I have one question. Is this consistent zoning with the partial to the south?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ely, since we have excluded area two from the study area, and therefore have excluded it from the zoning request now, if this is approved and developed commercially, talk briefly, or maybe Mr. Lott might want to talk briefly before we open the public hearing, about landscaping and setback requirements.
Any, the site can continue, or the requested area is currently used for residential purposes. It's not a permitted use in the CH zone, but so long as it is continually used for residential purposes, it can remain in its current state. Anytime that use is abandoned, or they want to redevelop the property, the property will have to meet our minimum standards, and those are outlined in our zoning ordinance. I think specifically what you wanted me to refer to was our buffering requirement that we have between CH zoned properties and residentially zoned properties, be they in the county or in the city. We do require a, I believe it's 12-feet-wide landscape buffer to be located adjacent to any property zoned or used for residential purposes, but there'd also be a buffer required adjacent to the RM16 property, because multi-residential property is also a type of residential property, so we buffer commercial properties from those types of uses. It would require dense landscaping. There could be an option for a fence to be utilized. That doesn't decrease the width of the buffer. The buffer will still have to maintain that minimum width, but it would give some options for screening or buffering the property. We would look at the site plan, and this is something that, you know, I bring to you on a routine basis, and we would want to make sure that parking lot headlights don't glare through to the adjacent property that is zoned residential, and we would look at something like that, making sure those impacts are not negatively affecting that residentially zoned property. And they would also have to have our landscape, our other minimum landscape requirements, which require foundation plantings and landscape island plantings and those sorts of things. I don't, I think, just looking at the property, I don't believe that any redevelopment would of the property would hinder them from meeting our minimum standards. I think they've got room to meet our landscaping standards and our parking standards, depending on what the proposed use is. I think that they have plenty of room on the property to be able to accomplish what we expect from them.
Okay. I just want you to comment on that for benefit of the neighbors to the north. If there's no other questions, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the third and final public hearing today is a PUD amendment request for approximately 18 acres along Swan Home Drive, consisting of parcel L of Victory Station PUD, Gross Builders is the applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, sir. Our third and final public hearing this evening is to consider a PUD amendment, a planned unit district zone amendment. The property is located within the Victory Station Plan Development. The overall plan development is located along Highway 96, or Old Fort Parkway, or Franklin Road, however, whichever part of the road you're located on. The development is also located along the eastern side of Rucker Lane, and you can see that in the map that you have. The specific request is to amend the PUD as it relates to parcel L of the Victory Station Plan Development, so this amendment would not affect any of the other property in the Victory Station Development, just that parcel L as identified in the orange shade. The parcel L property, when the plan development was originally approved, was approved for multifamily development. In 2007, a developer approached city and asked for the PUD to be amended at that time to allow the specific plan outlined in the program book, which would consist of 288 multifamily dwelling units on the 18 acres. That plan was approved by both the city council and planning commission. Since that time, the previous owner no longer owns the property, and I believe that there's a bank that owns it now. Staff's been approached by Gross Builders, who is the applicant on this project, to amend the planned development program book, again, to fit the project they want to build, and you have on your iPads and also a physical copy of the program book that we had couriered to you. That program book would, of course, become the specific zoning for this parcel L of the Victory Station Plan Development, and any approval or denial or modifications to the plan would directly relate to that program book. The properties that are located to the northeast and west are zoned PUD and are part of that Victory Station Plan Development. To the south, this property is zoned RS10, single-family residential district, and is part of a developed, single-family city subdivision. There was a neighborhood meeting held for this project this past Monday at Skell's Elementary School, and I think that it was a well-attended meeting. Some members of staff were there as well to, I guess, participate in that process. I believe that Mr. Randy Caldwell has a PowerPoint presentation for the project that he'd like to go through. I loaded it on the computer per his direction yesterday. And is that still your plan?
It is.
Okay. And so he'd like to present the proposal to you, and then, after which you'll have a public hearing. I would just like to say, the plan's currently approved for 288-unit multifamily complex, and the plan calls for 312 units, and that's an increase of 24 units. The main difference is that increase of 24 units between the two plans and the building types, which you can see those in your program book. But I'll go ahead and, you've got it open, and you've got it running.
I've got it open. Hopefully it'll show up on the screen. Again, Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing Gross Builders. Do have Ken Starrett and Tony Stevenson with me tonight. And just kind of want to go briefly, just revisit some things we did in the workshop as far as the presentation we made before there, and there was a couple comments that came up specifically related to the parking garages and some of the restrictions, is the ability to count that towards our parking ratio, and then some concern over some of the architectural materials. So I'll briefly go over what we went over in the initial meeting, and then revisit that in a little bit more detail. Again, just to clarify one thing, again, as Margaret Ann said, you know, this was owned by a group called Edwards Place at one time, had gone through the zoning process. We were actually involved in preparing the construction plans back in 2008. They had basically got their approvals, were ready to break ground on the project, and the economy fell, and they basically went into bankruptcy, and the bank took it in their hands. Ken and Tony basically went through a fairly exhaustive due diligence process, visiting with the staff to understand a couple things. The development, the quality expectations were there as it related to the initial entitlement of the property, and also the infrastructure requirements specifically related to Roxburg Court there, because as you may recall during the initial approval of this, that was required as part of the development to extend that, and that was a point of great discussion at our community meeting last night, and I'm sure you'll hear concerns about that tonight from them. But Ken and them have purchases, so this is now owned by Gross Builders. So that's just a little bit of history on it. Go to F5 here, hopefully get that. Again, and this is just to reemphasize, this is part of the original Victory Station PUD, identified in red as was shown on the previous map there. Again, nothing extraordinary about the property. This is 18 acres in total. It was farmed, so it's a pretty open field with three lines along the perimeter, which when you see our master plan, you will see that we've gone to great extent to preserve those and do not plan on building on those or removing those trees. And again, you'll see the alignment of Roxburg Court there on the right, basically, that was established as part of the original design for the project. You'll see there what the layout for the original approval was, again, for 288 units, three-story garden-style apartments, a lot of emphasis placed on putting the units on Swan Home Drive there, so that the architecture would frame that edge of the street, and then some of the internal development with the drive looping around the clubhouse. And again, it was three-story apartment units. Stormwater management was taken care of next to Roxburg Court. When we revisited this, again, with Ken, with Gross Builders, when we started looking at the planning, again, we basically had to come in with their product as compared to the previous product. Because of their product and some greater efficiency they have related to some of the breezeways and extended breezeways on there, we did some studies that we figured we could gain an additional building on the site, which basically cost us coming before you with a request for, rather than 288 units, 312. We really focused those units as compared to what the previous development was, basically up in the upper right-hand corner where you see the stormwater management facility. So that is where we accomplished that. We really took to heart the, keeping the integrity of the original plan with placing, again, the buildings on Swan Home Drive there, making sure we recreated that edge. And then we also went and tried to look at some things we could do, that we had some opportunities that actually improved some of the buildings as far as how they related to the Scottish Glen community. So we kind of did some reorientation of buildings so that the long faces didn't face back there. As you recall, and again, as we presented in the workshop, you'll see what was approved on the left, and on the right, there was a loop drive that went around the clubhouse. Because of the reorganization of the buildings, we were able to basically take that connection out, which enabled us to remove some of the parking along the back property line that was there. We also took and reoriented the buildings that were on the left there toward the ends of the units, faced the community rather than the long facade of that, and as you can see to the right of the clubhouse, we were able to do the same thing. So we really, instead of having two or three buildings that basically had the long side facing Scottish Glen, we were able to reduce that to one. We're also able to pull the parking off a little bit more on the left side as well and create a little bit more green space. So again, we've been able to create, we think, a better relationship to Scottish Glen as it relates to the layout of the development. The thing that really came up, I think, one of the things that came up in the initial workshop meeting was, again, as we started to discuss our parking ratio on here, we originally showed 644 spaces on the site, which is about a 2.05 parking ratio on there, and in order to count the garage spaces towards meeting the 621-space requirement that was, that is there with the city, that there had to be some restrictions placed relative to not doing any storage in those garages. Gross Builders went back to kind of revisit that and to see how we could address that, and they're just being honest. I mean, easiest thing would be to come to you and say, you know, we're going to restrict those garages there, and that's very difficult for them to enforce. It puts kind of their management in a difficult position. If somebody is using it for storage, you have to go in and tell them not to use that. And so that's one difficulty that arises there, so they would prefer to keep that in there. It is amenity for their development. They do find that, you know, most of the people use the garages for parking, and Ken and Tony, well, I think, will speak to that here in a minute, what they generally see, the people that do use it for storage, or people that are coming in, are getting ready to move up in a house, and they're moving there temporarily, and they're storing some of their things in the garage. So basically what happened, that would put us in a position where we'd have to add 54 additional surface parking on the site, could be accomplished on the site. There's nothing that restricts us from doing that. But again, they built a number of communities in the middle Tennessee area, their most recent one in Spring Hill, where they have a 2.05 ratio, very, you know, exactly what we initially presented to this body, and that development is working well. It fits their model. But we went back and we revisited to see where we could get some additional spaces, and on the image on your right, without, you know, encroaching in some of the more significant green spaces, we looked to see where we could pick up some additional spaces within the site, and we were able to pick up 17 additional spaces over just throughout internally, more internally to the development. That basically leaves us with a shortage of about 37 spaces for meeting the true requirements in the zoning ordinance. And our thoughts are, relative to that, is that, you know, we have 62 garages, that kind of leaves if 25 of them were being used for storage, basically, we would still meet the integrity of the ordinance, which is about 40% of the garages. So again, I think, going back to what their experience is in, they're actually building a development in Lebanon right now, where they're actually restricted them to under two spaces per unit. They feel very comfortable where they are, and I think, hopefully, we're not sending a presence. We know we went through this basic market analysis with the initial submittal that we made on behalf of Edwards Place, because at the time, we were getting the garages to count towards the parking criteria. And I'll let Tony or Ken, if there's anything I missed that you guys want to add on to that, please feel free to do so at this time, and then I'll continue on with the presentation.
Honorable members of the Planning Commission, once again, it's a privilege to be here before you. We've developed a couple other apartment complexes in your town, and we're delighted to be here. It's been a good experience for us. Gross Builders is a family-owned company, been around almost 100 years, we're privately held, everything we do is in-house, from development to construction to property management. We currently have in our portfolio about 10,000 units, and parking is a big issue with us. We go through very detailed parking adjacency studies. People don't like to walk too far from their car to their apartments, so we actually try to lay things out. We go through a lot of effort and study, and we think that we have it right. Apartment people will show their displeasure with their feet, and they will move. So we have to get it right. And I think we have the ability to add the additional 54 spaces. I don't think we need it. Tony and I were going through our apartment complexes over the last two nights in the evenings with parking lot ratios of right around 2 to 2.05, and a couple of our different projects here in Murfreesboro, as well as in Huntsville, Alabama, and there appears to be plenty of spaces. I would rather see green than asphalt. I think it makes for a better project.
And basically with this, basically, current proposal that we have before you, we've got about a 2.1 ratio, which is above even what they just discussed. Well, it's not moving. It's moving on my screen, but it's not moving up there.
They've got it on my screen instead of on your screen, so I think if they just switch, there you go.
And again, just going back and revisiting the justification for the additional units, and again, we went through this in the workshop, if this were truly an RM16-zoned piece of property, which is fairly typical for multifamily complexes, as you all know, there are some density bonuses there associated with amenities being provided. We've been through those calculations, and if this was just a straight zone, we would actually be able to achieve one more unit than what we've even shown on the property. So again, going through that exercise to not only make sure we meet the PUD, you know, intentions, but also the zoning criteria as well. The other discussion that came up relative to the workshop, again, was the architectural and some of the materials. We expressed the move that Gross Builders has gone from their products that they have built in Murfreesboro currently to more of a craftsman style, and you see that in some of the architectural elements here. The concern that we heard, again, was the initial proposal was basically to do the cultured stone and brick at the bottom base, and you'll see that on some of the columns, and then we had the color band that was at top, that was a shake product, it was a very thick vinyl product, and then the other was their, they wanted to stick with their, initially with their vinyl product that they've done everywhere else. We heard concerns about that at the Planning Commission. They went back and... They went back and, and reviewed that and revisited that. And basically again, their desire, they, they are willing to go to the Hardy Plank where the, where you see the yellow, yellow color right there. We still want to stay with the vinyl product as far as the cedar shake because it's actually thicker than anything else, any of the vinyl that you just recently approved actually out in the avenues area, but it's only, the only good-looking product that they can find and, and it's in, in that vinyl product. The only place that we are requesting to do vinyl is on the interior breezeway there for maintenance purposes on that. But again, that's protected from some of the concerns about hail damage that we hear and, and again, it's not very visible from, from the surrounding area and you can see where the canopy comes out through, through the breezeway there, there, that's even basically screening that a little bit as well. So again, went back, revisited that, made some adjustments in response to the concerns that we, we heard at the workshop and we hope that everybody is acceptable, you know, that, that does meet the intentions of what the, the concerns were expressed at, at the workshop. So anyways, again, we, we basically I think are leaving it to one thing with the parking, with the request for the parking, the variance on the parking and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, we had the, the neighborhood meeting the other night, a lot of concern expressed about Roxburgh. You know, we knew coming into this and again, they went through their due diligence, that's something they're prepared to build if required as, as part of the development and they understood that as, as a requirement when, when they bought the property. So I'll leave it to the public hearing if you would like.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Caldwell?
Excuse me, Mr. Caldwell, so what's the, that last thing you were saying, was there concern that you're going to leave the public hearing? What, what it was like it when they bought it? I, I just missed that.
I'm, I'm sorry, the, oh, relative to Roxburgh Court there or the?
Roxburgh Court.
Yeah, Roxburgh Court is the, the public road that, that is required to be extended that, that was initial, part of the initial approval on this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If there's no other questions from the Planning Commission, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Commissioners, thanks for allowing us to speak here. My name is Kevin Goodnight, live at 4377 Scottish Drive. And yeah, I would like to bring your attention, the fact this planned development's been, been on the books for 13 years since 2000 and it hasn't developed at all in that time. And I've, I'm a recent transplant here, the last year and a half, but I believe in the last five to six years is when Scottish Glen, my neighborhood, has developed. And now we're over 95% complete, we're virtually complete. So our expectation, what we did move in with and the understanding what we're living with right now is very different from what's being planned with this big retail development and, as well as the multifamily housing in the, in the apartments. Concerns on that, number one, it's a transition or I believe lack of transition going from our neighborhood into that retail establishment, going directly from our neighborhood into the, in our homes to the apartments is not a reasonable transition, is not gradual, is pretty drastic. We'll be only 800 feet from the retail that's being built there. By extending Rox, Roxburgh through to, and connecting Swan Home, we have concerns about increased traffic. We have concerns that the, the apartments that are being built, the owners have two other complexes within our zip code, which have according to the crime statistics, have the highest crime in the, in the zip code of other apartment buildings and the lowest satisfaction ratings from, from the research that I could do. So that is a concern of ours. We have concern about crime mischief, we have concern about traffic, we have concern about safety in our neighborhood. As I understand it, the, the only, the only entity that's pushing for this road and wants the road is the planning department. The neighborhood has not asked for it, the apartment has not asked for it, the, the planned development is, is not asking for it, it's the planning department that would like this road and with the rationale that it's public services that need access to our neighborhood. And I'd just like to point out that we do have three egresses and entrances to and from the neighborhood, out of the neighborhood. There's, and they come into our neighborhood via the, you can get to the front of our subdivision, the middle and also the rear of our neighborhood through this. So there's, there's, would be no concerns about public services having access to it. As I understand it, the, the fire department and the sanitation department, their biggest concern is having cul-de-sacs, which there's not one right now in Roxburgh because it was planned to go through. It seems like that would be reasonable to, to be able to, to address and a lot less expensive than putting a road through there. The police department may, they may want the road, I don't know, but I, I would argue that they have enough, we have enough entrances for safety reasons and I would also argue that, you know, potentially with increased traffic and, and potentially crime and, and anything else that may come in through, through there, people passing through the neighborhood, the police may find themselves in our neighborhood more than they currently do. You know, I know it's within the commission's purview because this road is a part of what's being addressed here today, part of the, the apartment buildings. I would ask that you consider striking the road from the plan and allowing, and, and I don't think you'll have, find much opposition, you won't find any from me for the planned development or the apartments, if we can have just that one degree of separation between our neighborhood and the, and the development, that's, that's obviously going to occur there. You know, we, we're concerned about property values and the fact that, you know, real or not, the perception of, of having that drastic change right into a retail establishment and, and the apartments is, is going to affect the property values as they are now. So I thank you very much for the time to speak here.
Thank you, Mr. Goodnight. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Tim Olson. I live on 4437 Scottish Drive. I just found out about the, the development just recently and I'm not crazy about adding an additional multifamily home area to our, in that area near our homes, but my biggest concern is for our children that are in the Scotch Glen subdivision and that road that comes in, it kind of tees into the road and then you have to turn either way to get out. It doesn't drive straight through. And that's my biggest concern is as people are leaving the multifamily home areas or the biggest thing is the commercial stuff, there's not really a lot of space there to be, for people to be driving in and out. It's, can be challenged as it is just inside that subdivision and we have to drive slow and watch for the children because there are young families that live in that subdivision. So that's my biggest concern and I thank you for taking it into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
To the Planning, Planning Commission and to all of us gathered here, thank you again for allowing us to be able to have a voice. My name is Talbot Randolph and I live at 4436 Scottish Drive. And I hadn't had a chance to talk to my neighbors, but we all are thinking the same thing, the road. I went to the meeting Monday night and I asked one of the developers, the first thing I asked was it a done deal and he said it was. And I didn't know if we were going to have this opportunity, now happy to have this opportunity. Because I asked him about the road and he said y'all demanded a road. And that is something I object to because on Scottish Drive, you have ample inlet and outlet and I don't know of any emergency vehicles, any service vehicles or anybody having any problem of going in and out there. And if you cut a road into this new development, then that's going to just entice traffic to travel Scottish Drive. And Scottish Drive is the only main thoroughfare we have through that subdivision and I would just hate to see that added traffic through there. So I'd like to see you reconsider that road and I won't argue too much about anything else.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Adam Reed of 4350 Scottish Drive. I'm here on behalf of my wife and some other neighbors, I'm sure. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity that you've given me to speak on behalf of this very important subject. I respectfully disagree with the proposition of the Roxburgh Court Drive extension. At first glance, it looks just like a road, a street, 500 yards or so of asphalt, but to me, my family and my neighbors, it is much, much more than just a street. If the street is extended, it will directly and adversely affect our finances, safety, property, property value and peace of mind. Scottish Glen is filled with many families, many of which have little children. On my block alone, which is just one cul-de-sac, I know of 20 children under the age of 16. The majority of them are actually under the age of 10. As children do, they play, they ride the bikes, they run and as families, we go on walks. However, if the street's extended, this activity will no doubt be diminished if not stopped altogether. As good parents, we wanted the best for our children and we chose a quiet subdivision with little traffic to ensure peace of mind. It's not fair for us as established citizens of this great city to have a sold a promise of quiet community with low traffic and a safe environment for the kids that we purchased, when we purchased our home, only to have a developer in this planning commission to come in and take the street and make it into an extension of a complex that we have not wanted to be a part of. I submit that such a request is unjust and unfair to demand that Scottish, Scottish Glen residents give up the enjoyment of life and peace of mind for the alleged benefit that's not really a benefit at all. Now this benefit of the street, who is it for? We, we hear public service and stu, and such, but as we've heard earlier, we don't want the, the, this other benefits because we don't believe it to be a benefit. We think the cons significantly outweigh the pros. Now, the, the thing about the benefit is that we're basing it on what could possibly come with the, the, we don't know if the development is going to succeed, we don't know if people are going to come in. So, you know, I currently have a vested interest in my neighborhood and this community, which is, in my opinion, is, you know, with that vested interest comes responsibility and pride to be treated with more favor and value than proposed people to come and residents. We are established citizens of this great city. It's also important to note that the renters, future renters have really no reason to use that, our, become into our subdivision because it's all residential, they have access to 96 without us, without using us and there's never been, you know, I don't assume there'll be a major problem for that. Now from a financial perspective, there will be a decrease in property value and probable increase in expenses. Due to the probability of increased crime, vandalism, litter, me and my neighbors will incur greater expenses. Examples include security upgrades, security for our amenities, extra trash pickup, all of which will probably increase our HOA fees. The proposed home sites that have not sold yet will also suffer, which then, you know, who, again, who is this all for? Is it for the, the community? It doesn't seem like it after what I've said. I'm also concerned with the, from an objective standpoint, well, also, I, I want to say this, I'm concerned about the validity of the need for this extension. Specifically, have there been any traffic studies done? Is there an official research on the subject? Because I also am concerned about the size of the roads and the frequency of ingress and egress of the extension. Likewise, is there research about Rucker Lane, which is a great outlet for everybody at Scottish Glen and the residents behind us? I've never had any problem on that road and it doesn't seem like the expansion of the Swan Home area will negatively affect or impact traffic on Rucker Lane. From an objective standpoint, I believe the extension of the road is just jumping the gun, so to speak. Specifically, there is no immediate or current need for the extension. As I mentioned earlier, there are no guarantees that this unit will fill up. From a taxpayer's perspective, let's save our money and wait and see what happens. Let's cross that bridge when we get there. In close, there is not a valid reason or credible explanation for approving any of the extension of Roxburgh Court. When put through the traditional pros and cons analysis, again, the cons significantly outweigh the pros. Now, in the event, the extension is proved tonight, please consider this my formal declaration that I will not give up and stop fighting. This is not the end of me. I can assure you that I will exhaust all legal means to derail this project from going. I will passionately, zealously and wholeheartedly challenge the proposal and for the benefit of my family, my neighbors and the members of Scottish Glen subdivision. Again, I really appreciate you listening to me and my neighbors, but before you make a decision about the street, please understand that this extension is much more than about asphalt. I hope I made that clear tonight. Your decisions affect the interests of real people, of which are citizens of Murfreesboro and eligible voters in this city. If you, if your decision is to extend the street, you will detrimentally affect me, my children, my neighbors, my neighbors' children and the community of Scottish Glen as a whole. I pray that you make the right decision by not extending Roxburgh Court. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Please keep your comments to no more than three minutes.
Thank you, council members. I'm Jonathan Lucas representing myself and my wife on 4722 Scottish Drive. Moving away from the road extension, some other concerns with the actual development property itself, parking is an issue. I have been in apartments, I'm actually most of my adult life and it's just my first home that I've actually owned and the number one problem has always been parking. Is there enough parking for people? And it's always negatively impacted the rental value of the people coming into the units, fighting over property. The clients themselves said that people don't like to walk to their cars, so people start making parking spots where there aren't parking spots, which then again, detrimentally affects the rental value long-term. However, when you usually move into an apartment and look for an apartment during the day, everybody's gone, so it appears to be peaceful. So they have that going for them. There is an easy solution, is that which is going back to the original proposed amount of units on there, which I believe was 288. If they cut those units out, they're back to the number of parking ratio, which would be more agreeable to the future tenants to maintain the property value. Another thing I'm concerned about is are they going to have friendly lights to our neighbors, to us? Are the lights going to reflect towards us? Are we going to have this wonderful glow? Or are they going to do a pretty good job like the public's parking lot area has done where they're mostly downward-facing lots? And then I question the need, do we really need 24 more apartments here in Murfreesboro? We are at a high ratio. My hometown is still suffering ill effects of overdeveloping and multifamily and apartments and I'd hate to see this town make the same mistakes that my town made in the late 70s and early 80s, which were very expensive to fix and also hurt the tax revenue because the property values go down. So consider all those things. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Ashley Herndon and I live at 4417 Scottish Drive. I actually am a district manager for a property management company and I oversee 1,500 units for them. I ask, and I agree with everything my neighbors have said, I ask that you guys do not extend the road specifically for the reasons that everybody has outlined. That's my main concern. It's going to give access to people that don't need to be in our neighborhood at all. When it goes even more commercial, that's a concern as well. I lived in Evergreen Farms previously off of Wellington Drive. When I moved on to Wellington, it was a dead end, there was nobody behind it. They ended up opening it up to Plantation South and was ultimately why I had to move. I did not feel that it was safe for my kids due to the amount of traffic and the speed with which the traffic travels through there. So I just ask that you guys really consider not annexing, not making the road where Roxburgh Court is. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, Commission, staff. My name is Joe Swanson, Jr., 1188 Park Avenue. My family has owned this property for over 40 years. And in 2000, we came to the city planners and asked them if it was appropriate or the time was right to do a development in this area. If you remember, Highway 96 or Old Fort Parkway used to be Rule Route 7. I spent many years in the home that is still out there and, and spent many weekends with my brother and my father hunting on that land and there was no shoulder on that road. So as things began to develop and we got sewer and, and other amenities in that area, the decision was made by the family to create this development as a planned development so that the neighbors that came into the community would have an idea of what was planned as a planned development to be there. I don't know if you remember back seven or eight years ago that the Roxburgh Court was originally planned to go into the subdivision at a different location and the civil engineers missed that on the planned development, so it needed to be moved. So the, the street itself has So, the street itself has been planned pretty much since the inception of 2000, when we did the planned development. I have reviewed the proposal from the Victory Station Design Guidelines. It meets or exceeds those baseline requirements, and I would move that you recommend this project to go through to City Council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
Good evening. My name is Richard Daniels. I reside at 4425 Scottish Drive. I took the keys to that home in April of 2007. I was one of the first homes to be built there and to reside there near just a few hundred feet where the intersection is proposed. The years that I've lived there, all I can tell you about is what I've seen from my own experience, and that is families move in, and families with children, and I've seen those children walk with their parents, with their pets, ride their bicycles up and down Scottish Drive, from where they live up to the courthouse where the swimming pool is. And if this road goes through, I'm just concerned that the level of traffic increase may endanger those children. So, I'm just asking, we think about the kids about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Hello. My name is Melissa Temple. I live at 4346 Scottish Drive, and I took residence in Murfreesboro in June of this past year. Excuse me. And I am opposed to the connection to the, for the court, mainly because I have two children, two very small children, who we bought this property on purpose. We bought a house on a quiet street with families. If you come to our neighborhood in the afternoon, our streets come alive with children, and we do not want this road. We do not want people traveling through our neighborhood for no reason. There is no reason for them to be in our neighborhood. There's no reason for a connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Temple.
Hi. My name is Dawn Lombardi. I live at 4527 Scottish Drive. I just wanted to back up what all my neighbors said. I'm not going to go over it all again. I don't want the road. I don't think that there's a need for the road. And also, this road, we have a small subdivision. It's not large at all, but it cuts through the middle of it, which will now be a main access road. And I, like, I just want to reiterate again, we do walk. You know, our children are out, we're all walking, riding bicycles, and I just wanted to say that I oppose the road as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello. My name is Sherry Knox. I live at 4517 Carley Court. I guess I'm the only one that's not on the Scottish Drive mainland, but it's very important to me also. I moved to Murfreesboro from another state in 2010, and I looked a long time before I decided where I would set up residency. I was pleased with what I found at Scottish Glen. I was, because I lived the majority of the time by myself, I felt an element of safety there already. So, I too am greatly opposed to extending the road into our subdivisions, so I ask you all to please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Edwards. I live at 4505 Carley Court. This will be in my backyard, and I just want to say that I know there's nothing we can do about the development itself, but I strongly oppose the road going through. Like everyone else has said, it's all about the kids. We moved there for that reason and that reason alone. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Lee Murray. I live at 4425 Scottish Drive, and I don't have children, but I am a former, I am step-parent to a child who suffered a traumatic brain injury from being struck by a car. So, after teaching a child to walk, talk, use the toilet, spend three years doing every type of possible therapy at Vanderbilt, I can't see any reason to put any of my neighbors' children through what I've lived through and the pain that that's caused, me personally, his father, and his family. And so, I just think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Chandra Harrison. I live at 4358 Scottish Drive. I have lived there for almost three years, and my three small children love to walk, love to ride their bikes. We are out in those streets all the time. If this road goes through, I am very, very fearful of, for their safety, and so I hope that you consider that. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for hearing us all speak. My name is Paula Goodnight. I live at 4377 Scottish Drive, which is at the corner of Scottish Drive and Roxburgh Court. I have three beautiful daughters, and I am so very concerned about the increase of traffic. It will go right in front of my house, and I'm concerned about the increase in crime, the increase in vandalism. That will be inevitable if you cut Roxburgh Court through. I'm very pleased and happy with the availability of services we have with entrances and exits, one onto Rucker, which is becoming a main thoroughfare, one in the middle of the neighborhood, one toward the back of the neighborhood. I don't feel that cutting Roxburgh Court through to a large apartment complex and/possible retail area would be a good idea for anybody, much less, most especially, I should say, the children. I'm actually terrified of what could happen if you do this. I'm, I'm very, very, very concerned, and I'm concerned about our property values as well. And I know that you, the commission, are concerned about the conservation of our property values because we're established residents, established neighborhood, and it should concern the city as well. There's no doubt that the property values will go down, which adversely affects our family and adversely affects our children. I am asking you from the bottom, the bottom of my heart, that just because a road was penciled in on some plans in 2000 or 2008, I'm not even sure, I get all that confused, but because a road was penciled in doesn't mean that you can't erase it when there is absolutely no need. It would be a travesty to cut something through and have all these negative things happen when there's absolutely no real positive reason to connect an established, quiet neighborhood full of children to an apartment complex and possible retail area. And as far as the apartment complex goes, I personally oppose the additional units because I have children in Blackman High School, I have children in Blackman Middle, and I have younger children, a younger child, that is, and that would be zoned Blackman. It is woefully, woefully already overcrowded, and I find that the additional units are irresponsible. But my main concern is Roxburgh Court. Please, please do not connect us. Take your eraser and just erase that little part. There's just not a need for it, and I appreciate your hearing me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goodnight. Anybody else?
Hi. My name's Paul Harris. I live at 3211 Landview, which is not connected to this, but I'm here on behalf of my granddaughter. What I would like to ask is for this panel to go out to that neighborhood in the afternoon and look at the number of children. What, what I've heard here is absolutely true. It's a wonderful community, and it is just jam-packed, full of kids. These parents have moved here for a reason. They've moved here for safety and security. Please, 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 think about the children. Go out there and take a look and reconsider the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody. Jamie Craig. I'm also a resident at Scottish Glen, 4354 Scottish Drive. I would, I'm strongly asking you guys to reconsider extending that Roxburgh Court street into this development. I'd like to invite Mr. Swanson. Anybody else that would want to come and have a cookout with us on our cul-de-sac? And then you would understand why all of us are here tonight, asking you guys to reconsider this, so please think about it a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Did we get everybody? Okay, seeing nobody else come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm sorry.
She's standing.
I'll reopen the public hearing, maybe a little faster. I see why you're a little slower now.
Amanda Thompson. I live at 4305 Roxburgh Court. I haven't lived there long, just about a year, but I purchased my home because of the size of the neighborhood. It's a small neighborhood. It's a quiet neighborhood, and I would just love to see it stay that way. I'm fearful for all the reasons that my neighbors are, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Didn't mean to cut you off early. Did I miss anybody else?
Good evening, and thank you again for hearing all of our stories tonight. I'm at 4626 Scottish Drive. I'm at one of the inlets at the front of the neighborhood.
Would you give your name?
Alicia Reed. Sorry. I too, with Amanda. She's at the back part of the neighborhood. We have three entrances in and out. There is not a purpose or a necessity for this extra street to come into our neighborhood. As I said earlier, the neighborhood is alive with children, football games, bike rides, walks with the pets, and it's just the safety that we're concerned about. If they choose, they've approved for the apartment complexes, we understand that, but there's not a benefit for them or for us for this road to be added or cut through to our neighborhood. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, anybody else? Don't be shy. Missing anybody back there? I can't see Mr. Ives, kind of blocks me from that. Okay. In that case, I'm going to try to close the public hearing again. Discussion from members of the Planning Commission. Mr. Aitlott, would you like to start us off?
Yes, sir. A couple things I want to talk about. One is, I want to talk about the current zoning for the property. The current zoning for the property is very similar to what is being requested. The current zoning is for 288 dwelling units on the property, multifamily, similar type of construction, similar layout. It includes the street, Roxbury Court. That is the current zoning. The issue of the parking has to do with the issue of whether or not the garages that are proposed will be restricted to only automobile storage. If they count the garages, which other, if they were willing to make that restriction, they would exceed our parking requirements. Our parking requirements are 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom. Counting the garages, they will exceed that standard. It has been our experience, and we encounter this from time to time, that with these type of apartment complexes remote from the university, that standard of 1.1 per bedroom seems to be a little bit on the high side. The study that we reviewed earlier this year, or late last year, or middle of last year, verified that. It showed that. But we do want the multifamily complexes in our community to have adequate and ample parking, so we kept the standard. When we have had developers of apartments that want to vary from that standard, the identification of that during the planned development process is appropriate. I think that the parking that they're showing us would be, would exceed our old standard. Our old standard was two parking spaces per dwelling unit, and that's the way a lot of the apartment complexes in our community are developed. But they will exceed that even without counting the garages. So, that's one issue. The second issue, and this is, this is where I guess I'm having to represent another side of the issue, and that is about the street connection. In 2000, the city approved the zoning for the Victory Station after a lot of public hearings, after a lot of neighborhood meetings, after a lot of design effort. The Swanson family hired a professional, and they did have, my recollection is, that there was a traffic consultant who was part of that planning process. And the, this street, it's called Battalion Boulevard on the map today, was shown to actually extend southwards to stub into this tract with the expectation that it would extend further south and eventually tie in with Rampart Lane in the subdivision to the south. As Mr. Swanson said, the two engineering companies, there were two different engineering companies, his engineer and the engineer of Scottish Glen, they didn't communicate very well. And really, in hindsight, there was a discussion about moving and downplaying that, instead of being a four-lane or a median-divided boulevard, to make it more of a local street. The desire being to add some connectivity to the subdivision. All of the connections of the subdivision to the south of Scottish Glen, not counting Scottish Glen, but all the subdivisions to the south, they all outlet onto Rucker Lane. Rucker Lane is a street that is increasingly in need of reconstruction. It's a street that we have on our capital plan for reconstruction. It's a street that we are planning to reconstruct and have been for some time, and it is on our major thoroughfare plan to be reconstructed. When Scottish Glen came, there were two streets in Scottish Glen that connected to those subdivisions to the south. One about one quarter of the way into the development, and the other at the very back, almost over to Puckett Creek. And that would be Tara Trace at the very back and Rampart Lane in the, on the western end. The connection of Roxbury was designed so that it would be a standard width. It wouldn't be a boulevard, and it would have some extreme curvature to it to increase the awareness of drivers on the road, to slow them down. It also intersects between two areas that would be multifamily and the Victory Station. So, in 2007, when we undertook the Madison zoning, that was part of the plan. They included it as part of the plan for that development, to be, to have that street built at that time. Something that I did check on and that I was, wanted to make sure was, was the case. When the subdivision plan, the master plan for Scottish Glen was approved first, it showed a street connection to the Victory Station property, as we planned. Then later on, when Scottish Glen Section 2 was developed, where Roxbury Court is now, that street was shown to stub out to the, to the north into the Victory Station property. There was a note placed on the plan that that street may be extended at any time without consultation to the residents. We, we did everything we could to, to put people on notice that the, the street was coming. When I say everything we could, we did the things. We recorded instruments. We had it on file. We maintained it on our website. People could assume these are mapping available to them. So, we, we've had a very good awareness. We want people to know, we don't, we don't want, we don't, we don't enjoy these awkward situations where property owners become aware of a street connection that they, they didn't know about or didn't desire. Speaking on behalf of the departments that are part of the city, the Solid Waste Department does want to see these type of interconnections. They make it easier for them to provide the services that they provide once a week to everybody's door, picking up. It gives them another way in and another way out, and not just back onto Rucker Lane, but this would take them back to Highway 96. The Fire Department, they, they like to see these kind of connections. When there are emergencies, another way into the subdivision is always welcomed. It's always good. Quite frankly, the Fire Department didn't tell me that they were going to drive that routinely to respond to calls. I think that they would, I'll tell you, that they would probably stay on the main roads to get to the subdivision. But they do like to have the, the But they do like to have the interconnections. The Police Department did tell us that they do want to see this kind of connections and do want to see this connection. It gives them another way into the subdivision from 96, not just off of Rucker Lane. Our Traffic Department has advised me, they do want to see this type of connection, that this is part of an overall strategy to help to manage a transportation program in our community. These type of linkages, these type of little connections, make a whole lot of benefit over time. We've become more and more aware of that as we've seen development in our community, that this is the kind of connections that need to be made. Now, the question is, is it a critical need? The answer is no, it is not a critical need. It is a desirable connection, it is a good idea, it's a connection that the staff of the city believes should be made, and that we should stick with the plan that we set about several years ago. If the plan is amended to take it out, it's not...the city will still deliver a high level of service, the city will still strive to have a good transportation program, and it will not be the end of the world, so to speak. But if we don't make the connection, it will be very important that we do something, and that is, that this street end in a cul-de-sac. Because right now, that street, because we expected it to extend, we allowed it not to end in a cul-de-sac. And there is no permanent turnaround at the end of it. And every time the garbage truck comes out there, they have to do something that they don't do on a thorough street, and that is either back out and back back in, because we use the one-arm bandits, the one-arm side-loaded trucks. And they have to drive up, pick up the garbage, back out of the street, back down to get the other side. We don't want them turning around people's driveways. Occasionally, they may do it, but it's not a good idea. They hit mailboxes, they damage driveways, and it's just not safe for people's children, their pets, their cars, or their property. So, we don't want to have those trucks backing in and out of driveways. And we don't want those trucks backing up and down streets. That's not good. They endeavor to be safe, they have a good track record, but they're well-trained, they're experienced. But why would we want to put them in that situation if we don't have to? So, if we don't extend the street, we do want to see the street properly terminated in a cul-de-sac, and that is important. I think that's the big issue I heard at the neighborhood meeting. I understand the sentiments of the people who spoke. We have encountered this before as a planning commission. And I'm going to stick by my guns, because I'm asked, and I have been requested, to represent the other departments, and that is my responsibility. I'm glad to answer questions about it.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Ailat, when you're talking about you want the road to end in a cul-de-sac, are you talking about Roxbury on the side of the apartment side, or are you talking about where it already exists in Scottish Glen?
Where it already exists in Scottish Glen. And that can be done more than one way. One way would be for someone, maybe these developers, to extend the street far enough into their property to end it in a cul-de-sac, with a proper turnaround. We saw something like that not too long ago with the apartments over off of Deal Lane, where in the back of it, we wanted to see that street terminated in a cul-de-sac for much the same reasons. And actually, on that subdivision, or in that apartment complex, there is a gated entrance at the end of the cul-de-sac to get into the apartments as an emergency access, because it was only one way into that apartment complex.
I couldn't see how you would do that within the lot right there in Scottish Glen, so if you'd have to extend over into the apartment.
If it came out of Scottish Glen, those lots would no longer meet minimum zoning requirements, or one of them wouldn't.
Right.
And who would be the responsible party to do it?
Mr. Ailat, you're going to have to help me here. I only see, and maybe my map's not good enough, one entrance into Scottish Glen from Rucker Lane.
There is one entrance into Scottish Glen off of Rucker Lane. If you look on a different map, if you look on this map, Ms. E, if you get this one up, that would be the illustration that was published with a notice.
Page 71 on my iPad, if you can look at it that way.
Yes, page 71. If you...and you can't always see the streets, but to the south of Scottish Glen, the first street coming off of Rucker Lane is Confederate Road. Confederate Road, as you come in, the second street is Rampart Lane, and it connects to the Scottish Drive. And then at the very end is Tara Trace, and it connects with Roxbury. Both of those streets, all those streets in the subdivision there, connect back to Rucker Lane.
Mr. Ailat, setting the road issue aside for just a second, that is the most critical issue, I think. I think one of the speakers asked about lighting inside the apartment.
Yes, sir. We have adopted a requirement in our zoning ordinance that we require that no more than one-half-foot candle of light extend over apartment line. We will require a photometric lighting plan, that's something we routinely do now. It's something that we adopted into our zoning ordinance about three or four years ago. Prior to that, we did not have a lighting requirement, except in the gateway area, and that area required a...actually allows a...before the amendment, allowed one-foot candle. We now have restricted that to one-half-foot candle. And we do use the box fixtures, and we do encourage them to be directed into the sites.
Okay. Speaking of lighting, with the revised site plan, master plan that we have here, there appears to be only a couple of small spots where the car headlights, where parking would shine over towards Scottish Glen. One of them's the far southwest corner of the site, the other one is over closer to the southeast corner there. Is the landscaping buffering adequate there to keep the lights from permeating over into the backyards of the houses on Scottish Glen?
The concept plan we have before us, I couldn't confirm that they do or not by just looking at that plan. But we will have a...before the site plan is approved for construction, we will have a detailed site plan. And I think if we were to make that a condition of approval, that they beef up those two areas, I think one of them would be to the south of building XII, that's 13, and the other would be south of IX, that'd be Building 9.
Right.
And I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, maybe even a small berm or something would help mitigate that.
I believe that the...Mr. Starrett, representing Gross Builders, is nodding vigorously yes, he would be willing to do that.
I don't know what kind of timeframe the applicant is on. This road situation is very critical, and obviously, it's not consistent with good planning for us to leave it like this. In other words, just not approve it and leave it as a dead-end road. That's not acceptable to me, long-term. So, we need to do one of two things. We either need to cul-de-sack it into the developer's property there, or go ahead and complete it all the way. My first inclination, and you may disagree with me, but I'd like to hear more from the Traffic Department and the rest of our staff about the road and the need for the road. These folks, I haven't been hearing anybody say that they didn't really mind the road being there. I think they pretty much unanimously was against it. I think it's good to have the road. I don't see a lot of traffic coming into the subdivision from the multifamily part and from the commercial part. I think most of the traffic on that road would be the residents of the subdivisions that are joined Scottish Glen and the other residents over there in Plantation South, will use that for access to the commercial spots, and that's what it would be built for, because it's a public road. But I would like to hear more from the staff, and the other, the police, and Sanitär Sewer, and the Traffic Department about the need for this road, because it is a very hot issue with these residents out there.
Well, I think I'm hearing you say is that you would like for me to round up my staff and the staff of the city, and have them appear before you to answer your questions, and maybe to articulate a little bit more discussion about it.
Either necessarily bad, but at least report in writing about their recommendation on that road as far as the criticality of it.
Mr. Lamb, I think that we can have them at our next planning commission meeting, if their schedules will permit it. I have endeavored to accurately answer the questions. In fact, Mr. Blomley made an effort to interview the three departments that I spoke about, and I spoke with Mr. Richardson before he left town yesterday.
Okay. And if we do that, if we do defer it to the next meeting, I would like maybe a little better maps to show us the connectivity on all the areas that connects maybe a little bit better.
It's not a problem at all.
Mr. Wade, sir?
What about a crash gate? Is that something that would be acceptable?
The answer is, it depends on what purpose you're trying to achieve. A crash gate is not appropriate across a public street. So, if it were a public street, no. If the purpose of a crash gate is to secure a secondary entrance into an area by means of a private street, it's very appropriate. We do that on apartment complexes fairly often, as a second way in, we have a crash gate. The apartment complex I mentioned over off of Deal Lane, we did exactly that. It's on a private access drive, and it is a secondary entrance, and it is to be gated. If the street is intended for routine patrols of the police, routine solid waste management, no, it's not appropriate to gate it.
Ms. Young, do you have another question?
I was just going to say something that we haven't put into play yet, and I don't know the answer, but I do know that money will be spent shortly, two years, one year, three years, to do a complete reconstruction of Rucker Lane. And that's going to help the residents, and it's going to hurt the residents, because it's going to hurt them, because it's going to slow down everything. It's going to help them, because it's going to be a three-lane curb to go to the sidewalk road that will be built to much better standards. So, it's out there circling around. I can see a reason to have the road cutting through, because the traffic will...it could inhibit emergency responders going down Rucker Lane, which could be under construction for...it's going to take a year and a half to build that road, maybe longer. I don't see, Mr. Lamb had mentioned this, why residents of the proposed apartment complex would have any reason to go through Scottish Glen. Where are they going to go? The destination is out toward Memorial, Rucker Lane, or Old Fort Parkway. You know, people go places for a destination. It's not a cut-through, it's not a shortcut. I don't understand why anybody would want to, if they were living in the apartment, would want to come down that road and wind through the subdivision. It would be much slower doing that than it would be going out the other way.
Just kind of to add on to that, I do think, you know, I think we've worked really hard over the years to make sure that we have connectivity in our subdivisions and plan for them, as we did here. And on the one hand, I feel like, you know, this was planned in 2000, and this subdivision came in much later than that, and it was...there's every way in the world for everyone to have known there would be a connection right there, which usually we're going at it the other way, and we're having to be the bad guys, and nobody knew about it, and we're making a connection go through. That is not the case at all in here. But this subdivision does have the three other ways in and out of the subdivision. So, I don't think we need the connectivity for this particular subdivision. It's more about that, the commercial piece having access into here, and I'm not sure that's something that we have to have. But again, I would defer to the department heads, you know, if it's strictly...just because they want to be able to drive up and down or make it easier, I have a hard time with that. But I...so, I'm not feeling a lot like I'm wanting the connectivity, which is, I'm struggling with, because that's very much against my grain.
Mr. Halleberg?
I would just, I'd like to echo Ms. Jones's comments, and then go back to your suggestion. I would need to know the criticality of this road going through, based upon the different city heads, because at this point, I would lean, the fact of the matter is, there are other accesses. If this is not a critical need, then I say we just, you know, we don't connect it. That would be my opinion. But unless somebody from the city, whether it be police sanitation or otherwise, Fire Department, can make an argument for it more than what these neighbors have talked about tonight, I think we need to hear that.
Mr. Halleberg, I'm sorry, go ahead. What I think I said in my remarks was, we have not made it a critical need, and I can tell you that now. It's not what I call a critical need. It's a good idea, it's good planning, it's advisable, it's something that we want to see, but it's not critical.
That's true.
What would be the determining factor that it would be critical versus not critical?
Well, that's why we want to hear from the department heads.
Were it critical, it would already have been opened up. I'll tell you that. It would be a degree of public safety in our ability to provide necessary services. And that, you know, the subdivision, we allowed it to get started without the connection.
Ms. Gilli, I think I'm finally due.
Thank you, Chairman. And Kirk broached the subject of a crash or a yelp gate. It's fair to say that that scenario is designed to assist in aiding emergency services, but not routine day-to-day services. Is that a fair way to characterize it?
Yes, sir, it is.
And if we talk about critical need versus...this is more of a want. If we had to put it in terms of want versus need, this is a want versus a need, if we had to break it in those two categories?
Yes, sir, it is. To help with the discussion, and I'm listening to what everybody's saying, I'm listening to what you all say, and I'm watching the mood of the planning commission, let me outline a couple of ideas. One, you approve it as it is, or, two, you defer action with instruction to work on investigating cul-de-sacs, or, and to get the department heads here for the next meeting. Two weeks is not too long to wait for these kind of decisions. This is the kind of thing that needs to be done. Part of what I have not done is investigate what creating a cul-de-sac will entail, how it affects the developers, how would it affect their plans. Nor have I interviewed all of the departments. I've interviewed the ones that I consider the most critical, or I've had Mr. Blomley do it, Fire, Police, and Solid Waste, because they're the rolling services.
What about school buses and things like that going through? Has that been considered as a school board?
Oh, they have not yet been. I catch the three that I identified. And traffic, which I spoke with Mr. Richardson before he left town.
Any other comments or questions before I call for a motion?
Mr. Lamb, I move that we defer this for two weeks and let the planning director report back on the criticality, I love that word, Mr. Halleberg, of the project.
How do you spell that?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure I can pronounce it twice, but...
As well as the potential of the cul-de-sac.
Absolutely. I would second.
Motion is made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is carried, it will be deferred for two weeks. Moving on to new business, we have one item under new business this evening, that's an annexation request or request for sewer service as an outside-the-city sewer customer for approximately .97 acres along Elps Mill Road at Forbes Drive. Mr. Paudy Agarholtz is the applicant. Mr. Ailat, you go do this?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located way out there at the Buchanan, Elps Mill Interchange. This property is located across Forbes Drive from the Loves Truck Stop. It is not in the city's urban growth boundary, it is not in the city...it is not adjacent to the city, it's not contiguous. Other properties have to be annexed. Quite frankly, the city cannot annex it, and for that reason, because sewer is available and they need to be able to use it, we recommend that you approve them as an outside-the-city sewer customer.
Any discussion? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend subject approval.
Second.
Motion is made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the new business. Staff reports another business, Mr. Ailat?
Chairman Lamb, I have none tonight.
Bless you.
Okay. Stand to. End of.